So I have the time at 6:31, so why don't we call the meeting to order? So first off, I would like to appoint Carol, who's currently the associate member until she's sworn in by Kathy, as a voting member for tonight's meeting. Hold on a second. Hank, lay down. All right. I don't have any additions or deletions to the agenda, and so I think I'd like to start off first with approval of the minutes for our 11:30 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 11:30 meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have any discussion? I'm not going to call for the minutes of 12:07 to be discussed at all, okay?
Okay.
All right. So why don't we start off on our draft restricted housing development zoning bylaw? And I believe, Chaz, that you wanted to make some opening remarks?
I wanted to do that during the public hearing. I just wanted to give a brief history.
Okay. So, oh my goodness, we're joined with Bill. What a pleasure. All right. All right, let's see if I can, we can wait till the public. Let's see. All right. So Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, but on 3.1, we really don't need to take any action tonight, correct?
Oh, let me just look at the agenda.
Okay.
3.1 is the public hearing.
I have, listen, I'm looking at the, mine is basically recommend the appointment of Carol as a full member of the planning board for term to expire in 2023.
You're looking at the wrong agenda.
Am I looking at the wrong agenda?
Yep.
Gosh, I am. Never mind. But I have the, I have the correct one right here. So, all right. All right. So let me, 4.1, thank you, Beth. Townsend master plan committee update. I don't know if we have anyone that can provide us with an update?
I don't think anyone's on right now.
I can talk, I can talk a little bit about the last meeting if you want me to.
Yeah, that would be great.
The last meeting where they were going over the water department document, they were also talking about getting, they did get some kind of draft from Ronnie in regards to open space, and they were going to take that and distribute it amongst the committees so that they can look at it. They are meeting tonight at the same time that we are, and the documentation that the planning board had asked for them to submit, they said they're going to be sending it out. I thought that they were going to be sending out by today, but I'm not really sure if anybody received it. I didn't receive anything.
I didn't receive anything.
But the, the goal is to try to move as, as quickly as we can forward. So they're going to be meeting tonight, I guess, to approve whatever they're going to be sending out to us, is my assumption. And then they do have a next meeting scheduled on January 5th.
Okay. If I just may, as it turns out, the meeting tonight had to be canceled for the master plan committee because TQM could not run the two meetings simultaneously, unfortunately.
Okay. All right. So then I guess the next meeting would be January 5th, their next scheduled meeting. So then we can hopefully get some information there, but I plan to attend that one.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I did get an email message from Kim. I think you're copied on it, Beth?
Yep.
And yeah, their next meeting is going to be January the 5th.
Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, that was a late cancellation because it just came to my attention at late in the afternoon, so.
Okay. All right. So what, I'm going to skip over 4.2 because I don't know if I can do the scenic roads regulations in, in nine minutes. So let me jump to 4.3. Chaz, can we cover the DLTA MRPC Townsend Chapter 43D feasibility grant? Or I don't know if that's John, but sort of an update on that?
Yeah. That actually Beth has more information on that than I do.
At this point, we have to, well, the board has to, again, go back to reviewing the maps, and I think that the priority development sites have been selected. At this point, we need to review some literature from MRPC about the next phase, which would be meetings with property owners and in filling out the application, completing the application for the state, the warrant article. And further, I have, I'll be meeting with town council to talk about the implementation of 43D program in terms of, you know, the application, any regulations we need to adopt, anything we need to be aware of if the town adopts the program. So that's scheduled for Thursday.
Okay. John, do you want to add anything to that?
No, not at the moment, but we're here to support you.
Okay. We appreciate that, John.
Now, we are, we are contacting Beth, the, the three designated sites, is that what we decided on?
We had four, I thought, yeah.
Four, yep. Okay. So do we have a definitive splitting it up on who's going to be contacting who? And do you want to do that? Let's put it that way.
Yes, Lori.
I think it was a month ago that I was appointed to address the ownership of those parcels regarding the next step. And since that time, I have written John Yoom, and he sent to me the rest of the paperwork that needs to be reviewed, and I sent that to one of the owners who, who has been doing that. I was supposed to wait, and then I talked to Beth, and I was waiting to get instructions of how to proceed. But I think it's in the minutes of a month ago when we talked about this and since I do real estate all the time, I volunteered to take care, to take that on.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's hit 4.4, Safe Routes to School update, Charles?
I had asked.
Or Chaz, I should say.
I had asked Beth to put in the hard drive, the, we had an agenda. Veronica Kell and myself met with Rachel O'Donnell, and we had gone over background information, what our next steps are, and helpful links to everything. The main, I guess the main takeaway for, for this right now is that we're waiting to get in contact with whoever is in charge of the, the school, whether it be the school committee or the superintendent. We're looking for somebody who would be able to help us talk with or set a meeting so that we can get the buy-in from the school. My notes say that we did not hear back from any principal since July. Ashby Elementary is part of the, the plan, so it, this is a, a regional plan, so we need more, more people in that. The, there was an email that I sent out a couple of days ago since we had this meeting, and I haven't heard anything back. But bottom line is, what we're looking for is to be able to set a meeting with somebody from the school so that we can move forward. We just need to have an official okay. We do have under, from the police department, that they were interested in working with us, with us, so we just need the school to be able to do that.
All right. So let's see, 4.5, Monmouth's Regional Planning Commission Unified Planning Work Program Grant. Are you going to cover that, Beth?
Yep. I'm just going to pull it up real quickly. Um, yeah, 4.5?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, so we have heard from Sheri Bean at MRPC that they are beginning to work on the walkability study for Townsend. To begin the process, they need to establish the study area. They have attached maps, which all of you have in your packets, and the maps contain the points of interest in town. They overlaid, I don't know if you can screen share that, Lance? Is that possible?
Hold on.
... Since 2009, which was some fits and starts, and we're seeing a spike right now. A bad spike, generally speaking, is taking cities back to where they were five years ago, five to 10 years ago. There are some, some people, cities, but by and large, that's not the case.
All right. So is that going to be figure one, Beth, or Townsend points of interest?
That would be Townsend points of interest.
Hartley. Hartley, are you there? Can you allow me to share my screen? That's not my screen. One way you can do it, Hartley, is you can click Participants, and then you can go by my name, and you can sort of hit like the more, and you can like make me the host, and that will allow me to share my screen. Okay. That's good. Hold on a second. Is that what you wanted me to share, Beth?
Yep. There it is. So there, those are your points of interest that they have put on the map for you, as well as the rail trail. So you can see in red, the rail trail is added. And what is going to happen here is that typically Sheri mentions that the study area, there'll be like a quarter mile buffer around the clusters of the points of interest, which will create the parameter of the study area. And that's where, and she also provided an example, she pointed out that, you know, the cluster areas would be right, you know, in the downtown area at the terminus of the rail trail extending up towards Brookline, Route 13 rather, up towards the senior center. So like that would be one of the study areas that Sheri, Sheri and I discussed. So that's what we're thinking of. I mean, it's, it's quite a distance, as you could see, to down the rail trail to try to connect in the other areas by Dunkin' Donuts and that. So I guess I wanted to just ask the board, I know we're getting close to the public hearing time, what, what kind of role would you like to play in this? Do you want me to work with MRPC and kind of sketch out the study area? Or do you want to talk about it amongst yourselves and figure out, you know, or discuss the area in a meeting? Just kind of want to look in for some direction here.
I have a question.
Yes, Bill.
So these are all businesses, basically, and that's not why most of us moved here, for walking. So like Black Rock isn't on here. None of the town forest paths are on here. You know, there's all kinds of scenic vistas that we have in town along the roads that are, you know, this is, this is a piece of the puzzle, but I think it would be good to address the scenic aspects of town as well.
Okay. So I could certainly ask MRPC to add the points of interest, any trail systems. You had mentioned Black Rock, things of that nature, so that would be an excellent idea.
So Bill, can you, can you help us out and sort of list them? Because most people won't think of Black Rock, you know? I know where Black Rock is just because I've fished off from it before, but, you know, like trap falls and...
Yeah. I mean, even, even the West Townsend, what do you call it? The Well Field is, is a little scenic.
Yeah. Yeah. Would you be able to help us and, and put a list together and send to Beth?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work on that, but I, I think that we should have some more brains involved as well. But I'll talk to Ronnie, she may have some ideas as well.
I think we should also, if we can get in touch with Ray, he does the trails. We've been working on a couple of trail stuff.
Yeah. That's a good, that's a good point.
And you know, I think we should put on there all of the management areas as well as all of the open space areas.
Okay. Sure.
Laura, did you want to say something, Lori?
Yeah. I'm just noticing there's a lot of food places, which is good for the restaurants. Subway is no longer in business. Sanddander is no longer open.
Sanddander closed?
Yes.
Sanddander's been closed for at least a year.
Yeah. I think this is going to be just a general point, yeah. I think this map is going to be used to create the study area, so this map is not going to be the, you know, the final version. It's a reference point to create that quarter mile radius around the area that the walkability study will be conducted.
Okay. And Ronnie, did you want to add something?
Am I allowed to talk?
Well, I think you basically said that you are participating as a resident and not as a selectman for tonight?
Yeah, or maybe as a former planning board member.
Okay.
I think when we put this in last year, we were thinking of walkability as far as walkability to businesses go. We weren't really thinking about trails for this, that it was, it was looking at where do we want sidewalks? Where do we need bike paths for access to the rail trail? So that, at least that was what I understood our intent to be when we put in for this grant. So where I agree with Bill as far as trails goes, and certainly it would be worth looking at where we could put in ADA access for trails, like at Old Meeting House Park or Howard Park, or, you know, to make those trails accessible to all people in town. That's certainly worthwhile. But I don't know, Beth, what do you think? Because we kind of...
I think, I think all of that will be addressed, but Sheri couldn't join us tonight. She wasn't feeling well. But I don't know too much more about the details of the walkability study, but all of that, I'm almost positive, will be addressed. I've seen the walkability study for, I think it was Lunenburg, and they literally will have, you know, like a mock walkthrough where the, you know, they will invite people to participate in a, in a walk through the town to, to look at the crosswalks and literally. So there's a lot to the study that I can't really speak to, as Sheri can, and she'll probably join us at our next meeting. But the whole point of this is to let you know that the study is being launched and that, that it's time to basically delineate the boundaries of the study area. And so I didn't know if the board wanted me to continue to work with Sheri, or if you wanted to take out your rulers and, but I think this map is just a, a general point of interest map to, to use for the walkability study.
Okay. I think, I think I agree with our esteemed ZBA chairman that it would be nice to have the points of interest in there as well, so we can look at the whole picture.
Yeah. We can add that, for sure.
Okay. All right. So with that, I thought I would move on to our public hearing that is supposed to be starting at 6:45.
Okay.
All right. With that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Hopefully I did that right. And I'm going to return, whoops, hold on a second. I'm going to return you back as Chair Hartley. All right. So Hartley, you're back to Chair, and even though I was sharing my screen, I was able to let Adam in. All right. Hold on a second. I have to get back to where I was on my... All right. All right, Beth, I think I was in a different folder. One of them had the public, the legal ad.
Okay. So you're looking?
Yeah, I'm looking. I'm in the 2.1 folder. I see the draft bylaw development, Town Council red line.
Okay. So you went on the folder that says 3.0, appointments and hearings?
All right.
Back out to that main folder.
Which folder? All right, hold on. I see it.
Okay. Yeah, click on appointments and hearings.
Yep, I got it. I had that before. I'm looking for it.
You don't still legal notice?
All right. Legal notice, there it is. Okay, good. All right. So at 6:54 PM, I'd like to open up the public hearing for the, hold on a second, I got to get my agenda. For the age-restricted development zoning bylaw proposal, I'd like to first of all introduce the board members. So why don't we, so Chaz?
Chaz Exceduranian.
Lance McNally. Hold on a second. Lance McNally. Carol?
Carol Hofses.
Carolyn?
Carolyn Bezakis.
Laura?
Laura Schifrin.
Okay. And I've gotten everyone. And you look mighty chipper tonight, Adam. All right. So Beth, I assume that you're keeping the virtual public sign-on sheet?
Yep. Thank you.
With everyone that is here?
Yep. I've got a list.
Okay. With that, I'm going to read the legal ad. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5 and 11, the zoning bylaw, Article 12, Section 14569, the Townsend Planning Board will hold a public hearing remotely on December the 21st, 2020, at 6:45 PM to review a proposed zoning bylaw as follows. Age-restricted development zoning bylaw proposal. Parties wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to these amendments may do so in writing prior to the meeting or at a hearing in person or represented by an agent or attorney. Copies of this age-restricted development zoning bylaw proposal are available for review in the Office of the Town Clerk and Land Use Office during business hours or upon request by emailing planning@townsmass.gov. And then there's a link to the Zoom meeting for tonight, respectfully submitted. So I believe, Chaz, that you wanted to make a few opening remarks?
I did. I really just wanted to go over a little bit of the history of us discussing age-restricted housing options. That our original conversations on this started back in 2000, and at that time, it was identified in the, in the Housing Chapter of the Master Plan Update that the housing needs of Townsend were changing dramatically, and several items were bulleted and asked to be brought to the forefront for the town. But more specifically, the planning board was asked to start working on several different things, and one of them was to work with the housing authority, one was to increase affordable housing stock, or help increase affordable housing stock, encourage mixed-use developments, and allow two-family housing and accessory apartments. Since that time, each, each of these items have been enacted, and further adoptions of past planning efforts have been achieved with the town. The, the housing authority has been working in their housing production plan in 2015 that was written by the housing authority and approved by the state. They held a, a public forum, a public housing forum with residences, residences of Townsend. There are many homes in Townsends that have deferred maintenance and now need financial assistance for repairs was identified. There was a lack of housing choice. There was also that they felt that there was a needs assessment that was to target low-income renter households, homes for elderly and other fixed incomes, low-income homeowners and young adults who are locked out of homeownership. One of the most poignant feedback achieved at that particular forum was that Townsend should encourage housing production to serve a range of incomes, which, while preserving the small-town appeal of Townsend. Since then, the public housing forum that was held last year in 2019, the residents were asking us to gather additional information so that we would be able to start working on the new housing production plan, which is, the housing authority is working on now. The three bullet items that were most important were zoning, the zoning right now currently limits housing opportunities, that Townsend needs to establish an affordable housing trust, which we have done that, and Townsend lacks zoning enforcement with the three main things. One of the most important things that I wanted to point out to mainly the viewers tonight is that one question we did have on there was, would you be open to zoning changes that would promote more housing options within the community, and what are these changes you would suggest? The townspeople that were in attendance came up with these three major things. Number one is write a bylaw for accessory apartments, which the housing, which the planning board did. We have completed that one. The second one was write a bylaw for 55-plus developments or age-restricted housing, which is why we're here today, and to, and to look into further zoning changes that would increase the housing production. The planning board has been working with MRPC with a grant to be able to look at 55 community to change certain things. We did have, the planning board did have in 2016, a article, Article Number 23, in a town meeting. It was brought to a town vote, and the outcome of that was to take no action. So the planning board was asked to go back to basically the drawing board, which is part of the reason why we're here today. The planning board, the housing authority, and other agencies have been working hand in hand to advance the thoughts and wishes of the people here in Townsend. So there, there's been a diligent focus for the planning board to write the accessory apartment bylaw in this 55 and, and older bylaw. And we're now focusing on the age-restricted options that are requested by the town, and therefore the reason for this public hearing. And I just wanted to make everyone aware that we have been working on this for a long period of time with several different boards, and I'm kind of glad that we are at the, where we're at right now. And that's really what I wanted to say, Lance.
Okay. Thank you. Just for the record, who is at the phone number that ends in 0499?
Kevin Smith.
Oh, okay, hi, Kevin.
How are you, Lance?
I'm fine, thank you, and you?
Good, good, good. First time on the Zoom public meeting thing. I got through it amazing, isn't it?
Oh, yes, I'll tell you, the times that we live under. All right.
How many years I spent down there in front of the table? And this is kind of a unique situation for me.
Yeah, it is for all of us. So Chaz, I don't know if you had time to get it up, but can you read the mandatory referral comments for us, please?
Yes, the mandatory referral, the one that we did receive. Correct, Beth, that's the only one.
There's a few in the file. Have you been into the referral comments file?
I did. The only one I see is from Karen Moore.
Okay, that's one of three. The other, there's, okay, yeah, you can read that one and then you can decide.
Hang on, and I'll jump into the.
We received two, one from Highway and one from Fire, and they were both no comment.
Oh, that's right, okay, that's why I didn't print them, okay.
Okay, and then one more from Mr. Chanel from the Zoning Board of Appeals, which will be somewhat difficult to read because it's basically a comment on each, you know, a number of comments that he made on the bylaw itself. So I don't know how you want to read that.
Well, I'll go with what I've received from Karen Moore. She's the Director of the Senior Center. This was received on 11:30. This is outside of our area of expertise, but we have a couple of comments. Number one, C, which is in the uses portion of it, indicates that the development is limited to one-bedroom townhouses, but cottages and two-family dwellings are mentioned in other parts of the document. Two is how does D1 reconcile with D2? For example, how can a one-acre parcel have up to eight townhouse dwellings on only 35% of the parcel? Three is could you give us a layman's explanation as to the rationale of an age-restricted community that is not age-restricted by deed, Section E? And four, what is the level of affordability in these units as in comparison to Townsend Woods? And I guess, she says AAA, but I would assume that's Atwood Acres. Are affordable units is the goal of this bylaw to produce more affordable units or market rate? The need for seniors now and in the near future is the one to downsize to escape the maintenance of an older home and target in larger lot. But in order to make that financially feasible, there likely need to be buying a substantially less expensive home. And then I don't have anything, Beth, from Mr. Chanel.
I can make his points for him.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, as we go through the thing, I think we can talk about the various.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, just a minute, because I was supposed to leave four minutes ago. But a recent development that I believe is relative to this, maybe not age restriction, but certainly the housing aspect. So in the last two weeks, I listed a, actually 10 days, I listed a studio apartment and received 49 inquiries
Wow.
of people desperate for a place to live. So I'll just, I need to get to my other meeting. I'll just leave with that comment, but that is real life.
Okay, thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
All right, Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, Lori.
I'm glad there's a market for this stuff.
Okay. Gosh, so is, I see that Chris is on here. Is Chris going to take ownership of when we discuss this to mark up the document or for edits on it?
I can take notes.
Okay.
Share the document at this point, or do you want?
Yeah, I think maybe the best thing is to actually, did we lose Adam? Oh, no, there's Adam. I think the best thing is to sort of screen share the document with Adam's redlines on it and sort of go through and discuss it like that.
We need.
You agree?
Monitors for that.
Well, no, you can look at that and just. Or smiling face. Are you there, Hartley? And we lost Ronnie, I think, as well.
Oh, I see her on my screen. I mean, I see her name.
Oh, okay. Lance to Hartley.
He's muted.
Okay. Yeah, if you could make me host again. Okay. Hold on a second. All right, do you see the document?
Yes.
Okay. So Adam, it probably makes sense, since you have the comments here on it, that if you could sort of walk us through some of your comments and then we can discuss them. And then anyone else that has any comments, please chime in.
I have to agree with you striking out that first line because that's not understandable.
So I'm happy to walk through these, Lance, if that's what you'd like me to do. As you can see, Hartley, I provided a couple of versions of my redline changes. In fact, I provided it in a Word document, but I also provided it purposely as a PDF where I paginated the document a bit differently so that the.
Would you prefer that I show the PDF version, Adam?
If you show the PDF version, you can read my full comments without the sort of ellipses at the end.
Okay, why don't I do that, then? Hold on one second.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on my phone, Lance, I can't see a thing.
Kevin, did you get a copy of the document?
I have nothing. I'm blind here.
See if I can fix that.
I can email him a copy.
Okay, great.
Kevin, can you get to your email?
It would be, I wouldn't be able to look at it. I would lose you folks if I could look at it.
I understand.
And I'm looking at three computers here in my office. And God knows, I can't turn either one of them on, any of them on, so.
All right, has everyone seen?
Don't tell anybody I'm computer illiterate.
I just, sharing again.
What's that, Lance?
I said I'm sharing again.
Okay.
And people see that?
Yep.
Yep.
And this has Adam's full comments on it.
All right, so this is great and a bit easier to read. And I'll try to follow my comments in order here. So for those of you that have already had an opportunity to review the comments, you'll note that some of them are more about form than about substance, and others are more about substance than about form.
Excuse me, Sherry Bean is wanting to be admitted. Okay, so Sherry has joined.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Adam, go ahead.
So I think that the comments that address the form of the document will be simpler for me to address and likely not as controversial as those that address the substance of the document. So these changes at the beginning, in the initial language of what would become a warrant article to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw as follows. You had two items. The first one was to allow cottage dwellings and two-family dwellings. And I was unclear if that was something that was or is intended separate and apart from what the title of this article is, which is age-restricted development. Are you just simply posing to allow cottage dwellings and two-family dwellings by right? If so, again, is that distinct from the age-restricted development? Is that something that's allowed in certain districts or in all zoning districts? You've got to specify if that's what you're going to allow, what amendments would be made to the zoning bylaw to affect that change. So you need to address the specific sections of the bylaw that define uses and to add cottage dwellings and two-family dwellings, which you've now defined in the definition section. You need to add those as allowed uses by right in whatever districts you think are appropriate. If that's not what you're intending to do, if this article is really an article aimed at age-restricted development, and I don't understand what that means, I don't think it's necessary, you would simply begin the warrant article by saying, if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Article 9 entitled Special Provisions by a new section entitled Age-Restricted Development as follows. And then you would print the text of that age-restricted development. I've also changed the numbering because you can't number it 145-55 because there's already a Section 145-55 in the next article of the zoning bylaw. Unfortunately, when your zoning bylaw was codified, the codifier didn't leave extra sections within the individual articles for future use as some codifiers do. It jumps from section to section, article to article. And so you have to find some way to number this to fit in sequentially. So I've just suggested it be 145-54A. Not item, but that's generally how I've seen it done, where you want to fit something in between a 54 and a 55.
Yeah, that's good. I thought we were talking exclusively about age-restricted development, not going blanket as a right cottage and two-family dwellings everywhere in town.
That is correct. That's what our intent was.
We asked to strike some of that in the previous version of this bill, and I didn't see it at the top of this, so.
Oh, okay, got it. Now, one of Mr. Chanel's suggestions was to put the definition section between purpose and applicability, so between A and B. Because typically, we either put the definitions all in one spot or we start the bylaw with the definitions. At least that's what we've done in the past.
Okay.
So I think the way that this is structured, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's how I read it, is that the proposal, and I would support this because it's what I recommend and I think most municipal councils recommend in crafting zoning bylaw amendments is that rather than include definitions within a new self-contained section addressing, in this instance, age-restricted development, it makes sense to always consolidate the definitions in a definition section of your bylaw. You have an existing definition section of your bylaw. And so that's indeed how you've structured this. If you scroll to the end, very end of this document, you'll see on the last page, there is an item two. So we talked up above to see if the town will, item one, amend the zoning bylaw by adding this new Article 9, Section 145-54A. And our item two will be to amend the definition section of the bylaw, which is Section 145-5, at the very beginning of your zoning bylaw, to add an additional five definitions in alphabetical order, wherever they would fit in, for single-family detached dwelling, or single-family detached dwelling, two-family dwelling, multifamily dwelling, and then this concept of a cottage dwelling. So you wouldn't be defining it within the age-restricted development bylaw. You would be defining it in the definition section of the zoning bylaw. That's fine, the word of caution, not to jump ahead here, but the word of caution that I add in my comment at the very end of this document. Some of these terms, and this really applies whether you choose to define these terms within the age-restricted bylaw, bylaw, or otherwise, some of these terms already appear in your zoning bylaw. So you have to be mindful. And in my experience, sometimes drafters are not mindful of this. It makes my job more difficult when we get into a situation where a debate arises concerning the meaning of a certain bylaw provision, maybe even litigation concerning the meaning. And we look at a term that is defined one way in one section or another way in another section, or it was used in one section and then a later adopted zoning bylaw amendment, a definition was created for that term, but it wasn't meant to define the term as it already existed elsewhere in the bylaw. So you've got to be really mindful whenever you make a modification to a zoning or even a general bylaw, for that matter, that you look beyond the confines of what you're proposing, even if it's a new self-contained section, to see how your changes might have an effect on other sections of the bylaw. Okay, so if you define a two-family dwelling as a detached residential building designed during used exclusively as the residence of two families, and then go on to say that a two-family dwelling shall not include a detached, single-family dwelling with an accessory apartment, you've got to be mindful that that term, two-family dwelling, is used elsewhere within your existing zoning bylaw. And in fact, I did a very simple search using Ecode and found that it's used, I think, five other times within the bylaw, maybe four other times. You've just got to be mindful that this new definition that you're giving the term not only works within the age-restricted development bylaw, but doesn't change the meaning of any of the other existing provisions in a way that you don't intend.
That's right. Excellent.
Okay.
So I, Adam, if I may, I would suggest to follow your recommendation and change. And if we're going to put definitions, put it in with the other definitions. I think that is the smart way to do it. But we also, what you're saying is that we have to look at if we've defined it in any other part of the bylaws.
I am, Chaz, and in fact, I don't think you need to change anything because the way this is currently structured, if you scroll to the end, you do have the definitions going into the existing definition section of the zoning bylaw.
For all of these.
Yeah, so you've done it correctly responding to Catigan's comment that the definitions be put up front in between, say, purpose and applicability. I would agree with that if you were incorporating the definitions into this new bylaw, but you're not. You're putting the definitions alphabetically of the zoning bylaw, and I think that's the better way to do it.
Okay.
But we still should go ahead and just do a search to see if those terms are used in other bylaws to make sure that we're not changing something that we don't mean to.
I'd agree, and I think you're going to really run into that with single-family and two-family.
Yeah.
I don't think I found a reference to multifamily. You don't have anything currently referred to as a cottage dwelling. So those terms are not problematic. But single and two families are used. That terminology is used throughout.
Okay.
So then we get to the applicability section. And I want to spend a minute on this because it's sort of a theme that runs throughout this document. And it's sort of a determination that the Planning Board needs to make about how it wants to approach age-restricted development in concept. Because the fear that I have, the concern that I have, it's not really a fear because it's something that has been successfully addressed by communities throughout the Commonwealth. So it's not something that cannot be done. But you've got to be mindful in crafting an age-restricted development bylaw of both federal and state legislation that provides protection against discrimination. And I'm not suggesting that that's your objective here. To the contrary, I think that you're attempting to provide housing for a segment of the community that needs it. But whenever you talk about restricting housing, and especially restricting it based on the sort of key word "age", which is a protected class in Massachusetts and federally, and then you consider that another protected class is families, or familial status is the terminology that's used at state level. And by restricting. the terminology that's used at state level, and by restricting a development based on a certain age, specifically age 55 and plus, you are therefore limiting access to families, in other words, individuals with children. That can be problematic too, from a federal and state legislation perspective. So my comment here on applicability, and it arises the first time in this section, but it arises several more times throughout this document, is that there, there is federal legislation, as I just referred to, and the most applicable federal legislation is the Housing for Older Persons Act, often referred to as HOPA. And state legislation is the Massachusetts Anti-Discrimination 51B of the general laws. Those are the statutes that, or the acts that prohibit discrimination based upon age and familial status. And there are some exemptions to that, acknowledging that there should be an opportunity for age-restricted housing, but the exemptions are very narrowly tailored. And so when you craft a bylaw, you've got to look and say, well, are we allowing, is this bylaw, a bylaw that can be used practically, meaning used in a manner that does not result in, in unlawful discrimination? And number two, that can actually occur because there are programs that sort of fit the bill that allow developers to, to come in and build this sort of housing. And so in my comment here, comment number four, I've said that exemptions exist for state and federally aided housing developments for the elderly. So if it were a state or federally aided senior housing development, then, then that would be an exempt, exempt type of project. Development that are assisted under the Federal Low-Income Housing Tax Credits and intended for individuals either 55-plus or 62-plus, those are, are protected. And then finally, and this is sort of the catch-all, other 55-plus or 62-plus age-restricted developments on one parcel or on contiguous parcels' land totaling at least five acres in size. The reason that this arose, this comment of mine arose in the context of Section B, subsection 1A, under applicability, where you've said that these developments are permitted on any tract of land comprised of two or more acres, this is a reminder that, yeah, that might work if the project is a state or federally aided development, or if it's utilizing low-income housing tax credits. But if you're, if you're meaning to open the door to any sort of a developer that seeks to create a, an age-restricted housing development, they can't develop a project like that on a two-acre site, or a three-acre site, or a four-acre site. They likely need a site of at least five acres in size in order for, for their development to not be deemed discriminatory under state and federal law. And I'll, I'll stop there, but there'll be more to say as we sort of work through this document, that, that may have an impact on whether you keep this two-acre standard or you choose not to, because the, the mandatory or optional nature, and I, I heard the comments, Lance, that you read, or the Chaz read into the record, the interdepartmental comments, and, and one of them was to the effect of, how do you have an age-restricted development if you're not restricting the development through some form of a deed restriction?
Right.
And the answer would be, if it's not an obligatory development, if you're, if your objective is to create housing that is, that accommodates an older population in, in terms of how that housing is designed and accessibility for an older population, but not requiring that it be restricted, well, then, then that's the answer to the question. You then don't run afoul of federal or state legislation, no matter how the development is structured, or no matter what size development, parcel of land the development may be proposed, because you're not imposing that mandatory age restriction. It's only if the age restriction is a mandatory requirement of this sort of development that it be, that then you have to be mindful of potential conflicts with state or federal legislation, whether it be size of lot, or it be age of restricted individuals, or state or federal assistance, or use of low-income housing tax credits. All that only comes into the mix if your age restriction is going to be mandatory. And I wasn't very clear, Beth sent me a Word document, a Word version of this age-restricted development, and then she sent me a PDF version. The Word version had the age restriction as being optional, the PDF version had the age restriction as being mandatory. So I wasn't sure sort of which one. I, I worked off of the one that had the age restriction being, let me see what it was here, being optional. But if it's meant to be obligatory, it's a different conversation.
Bill?
So, Adam, you're saying that basically if we go smaller than, than a five-acre parcel, we can't do age restriction without being accused of discrimination by somebody?
For certain types of development, I'm saying that that risk exists. If it's a, if it's a, a project that's being pursued utilizing federal low-income housing tax credits, then it wouldn't matter what size parcel. If it's a project that is benefiting from state or federally, federal assistance, then it, it, the size of the parcel wouldn't matter. One of those other exemptions, and you're attempting to utilize the five-acre exemption, you can't use the five-acre exemption on a two-acre parcel of land.
No, absolutely, yeah. Okay. So, one more, one more question. I was thinking of one-acre parcels, and, you know, the big concern is, how do you do the septic system? And Title V, if you, if you have, say, four houses on a one-acre lot, Title V would require you to go condominium ownership, because, you know, only, you can only have one septic system on a, on a lot.
No, that's not, I don't believe that's so, Bill.
Really?
I don't. I'm not sure that's so. I, I had a conversation with Rick Metcalf about that recently, about that piece of property that you, that you had approached me about in the downtown, the downtown district. That's why I'm not sure to get to this gentleman's five-acre or two-acre limit. I don't, I, I think in, in the downtown district especially, you've got to cut that area down. You, you know, you're not going to find any pieces of property to do what you folks, or what the town really needs, that are going to be bigger parcels, where, you know, the comment was made to me earlier on, you know, we'd like to find some land located in the center of town, next to the rail trail, within walking distance to the drugstore, the, the town common, the churches, and, and say Family Doll, or, though, those size, bigger sized parcels are, they're, they're, they're non-existent down there.
Yeah.
You know, you, you're almost, you're almost forced to, to, to write your bylaw down to an acre or, or somewheres around there, because there's so few and far between to find bigger parcels down there. And with respect to the question about the septic system, I believe that, I think he had, Rick had said something to me about 400 square feet of, of space for a two-bedroom unit, and I thought there could be two septics on one lot, I believe. It's quite a while ago now. You'd have to check with, with the Board of Health on that one.
Okay.
But, you know, I, to answer the question about bigger parcels, to, to do what you folks wanted to do, and be in the downtown, within its proximity to the center for these over 55 jobbies, I, boy, I don't know, we'd find big parcels like that, you know? I, I don't know of any.
Chaz?
Um, Adam, if we had, let's say if they put in a unit that had, I don't know, a townhouse that had two different, two separate units, if one of those units was affordable, does that fit into what you were saying in regards to getting, like, would that fit into, to something with a two-acre?
By, by virtue of the affordability standard being, being incorporated?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that, it, it actually complicates things a bit when you begin to, to add an affordability component, and I noticed, and I didn't comment on it because, because I noticed that there was no reference to affordability within the age-restricted development bylaw as you've proposed it. It complicates things a bit because DHCD, which of course has a hand in most affordable housing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, has been very vocal about discriminatory effect, discriminatory impact with regard to any sort of restriction, age or familial status or otherwise. And so I, I don't know that the mere incorporation of an age restriction would qualify the housing as, you know, quote-unquote "state aided." I don't think that it would, and so I don't think it would allow you to avoid the five-acre minimum.
Yeah.
Yes, Phil?
Well, with regard to that, I, I would stay as far away from the state's affordability stuff as possible, because I think it's, it's much more useful to have native affordability, where, you know, if you had four units per acre, I think you can, you can get the price of a unit down to 250 or something like that. That's, that, I think that's affordable today. It's, it's, you know, who knows? But based on my experience with 40B, first of all, you know, we, we lose a 40B house a year down here at Copper Smith Way because there's nobody, nobody wants to buy them. So the problem with, with a 40B deal is that you can't make any money on it, and a lot of people think they're going to make money in real estate, so they want to buy a, a house that they can sell for more money later when they're finished with it. So, so economically, it's kind of a disaster for people.
It's not so much that, Bill, it's the people, you saw it on Copper Smith, you, you, you can't, you can't sell them at even below cost. And then when people buy them, they're set, they have a set rate that they got to sell them for, nobody comes in to, to buy them. You've seen that right over there. Couple, two, how many of you all said? Three or four?
Yeah. It's, it's, like you say, it's impossible to find people to go for that deal.
I know. So, so Adam, this is Lance, what is your recommendation to get around this at least five acres?
So I, I, I don't know that I have a recommendation yet. I, I think that the, the simplest way to discuss my comments, and we have a, you know, five or six-page document here, and we're only on the, on the first page, was to sort of fit sequentially, but as I alluded to, this theme, this, this concept of consistency with the federal and state legislation runs throughout the document. So I think that as we work through the other comments, you're going to have some, and by you, I mean, the planning board is going to have some very basic decision-making in terms of how you want to approach this concept of age-restricted development, how you want the restriction itself. And, you know, the fir, the first of those questions may be, do you want to obligate an applicant, a permittee, to restrict its development to those of a certain age? And if you do, I think that, you know, that, that is going to cause us to go through, start to finish this age-restricted development bylaw, then number one, ensure consistency with state and federal law, and number two, to provide more specifics, because simply saying age-restricted 55-plus doesn't mirror that standard in any of the applicable legislation. 55-plus meaning what? One resident, all residents? What happens in the event that the individual who's 55-plus dies, and the remaining residents are under the age of 55? Are they obligated then to sell their, their homes? So there's a lot to be discussed if the age restriction is going to be obligatory. If the age restriction is not going to be obligatory, but is going to be recommended, and you're going to structure this bylaw in such a way that it'll get built, will ultimately be either age-restricted by choice, or will be age-restricted by virtue of the fact that that's who it's going to appeal to, ba, based on the, the nature of the development that occurs, that, that provides for greater flexibility, less of a concern with inconsistencies between the bylaw and state and federal law, because it's not an obligatory condition.
Sounds to me like that's the way to go.
So, um, so with that, let, let's talk, so the next, the next section here, C, uses, is a sort of a, a, a simpler series of comments. The first is, first sort of falls into that category of more form than substance. You know, I, I think that the, the identification of the districts where you're going to allow age-restricted developments to occur probably belongs up in the applicability section. That's typically where you define to what types of, of districts this, this age-restricted development bylaw will be applicable. So I would suggest moving that up into subsection B. You can still say in C, the uses section, that the planning board can grant a special permit for the use, age-restricted development, to include and then define the types of dwellings that can comprise an age-restricted development. And in that regard, my highlight here, and I think it may be something that was caught by, and so we read at the start of the hearing as well, you said age-restricted developments can include simply townhouse dwellings. And I, I don't think that's, that's consistent with what you've said later, because, you know, in, in other sections, you also say that cottage developments, or cottage dwellings, I should say, and two-family dwellings are also allowed uses within an age-restricted development. So if that's the case, you need to say that here. This is an inconsistency, because the very next section talks about those, provides densities for cottage dwellings, two-family dwellings, and townhouse dwellings. So in, in order for densities to be provided, you need to allow them.
I had a question on the cottage dwellings at four units an acre and townhouse dwellings at eight units an acre. Because in my conversation with the Board of Health, they, they said they could do eight bedrooms per acre, no problem, but 16, I think, might be an issue from a Board of Health point of view.
Okay.
Unless a townhouse is a, is a one-bedroom operation. But I think, I don't know. You tell me.
So, so that's, I mean, you know, some of these questions, most of these questions are, are issues that arise in the context of an age-restricted development bylaw are legal questions. You know, some bylaws are more planning than they are legal, other bylaws are more legal than they are planning. So an age-restricted development bylaw implicates all sorts of aspects of state and federal law concerning age restrictions. But there are still some components that are, are good planning than anything else. So the sort of density that can be accomplished, that can be supported by the properties that, that you envision this age-restricted development bylaw more appropriately applying to, more readily applying to, that's something that only, only you, only your staff, only a planner can determine. The same goes for consistency between these various requirements. So I feel like I've said here, in the, in sort of my next set of comments, so what minimum setback requirements between buildings? You've got a provision in, in, on this page in item four, you allow the way of minimum setback requirements between buildings or internal lots created within an age-restricted development. So I have a few comments. What minimum setback requirements between buildings are you referring to? I didn't see it in your bylaw. And then where are, quote, "internal lots within the age-restricted development contemplated?" I didn't see anything that contemplated internal lots within a development. I envisioned more of a condominium-style development, unless you were, you were envisioning an age-restricted development being a subdivision of some sort. But then overall, you know, consistency between these individual subsections, whether it's under basic requirements, or, you know, when you, when you proceed to age-appropriate design or development standards, you know, whether what you're proposing here can actually be built. So you, you first define the, the, the types of dwellings that can be built, you then determine the maximum density, you put maximum building coverage to 35% of the lot area, you then establish minimum setbacks from property lines in the RA and RB districts. So when you apply all these standards in conjunction with one another, is it still feasible to build on these properties that you envision an age-restricted development being built? Or are there too many restrictions that make it impossible? I don't know the answer to that. I'm not a planner, and I don't know where you anticipate these being built, but it, it would be, it would be a pity to spend all the time and effort developing a bylaw and implementing, you know, substantive planning standards, only for, when you, when you add them all together, you can't actually build anything anywhere.
Yes, Phil.
Yeah, I would think, since it's a special permit, I think you could maybe not worry about the setbacks so much. Because, you know, if somebody tries to do something really obnoxious, you, you know, you don't have to, there's no, you're not entitled to a special permit.
So how does Atwood Acres and Townsend Woods get around this discrimination?
They're, well, one of them was HUD, right? Townsend Woods was a HUD development. I think they were both HUD developments, weren't they? So they were developed by the feds, so.
Okay.
I, I think that's how they comply.
Okay, because they're certainly not on, if, you know, I think it's on less than five acres.
I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the town owns a bunch of land there, but I mean, don't we own this, they were talking about that veterans housing project. So we own it, we own even more land, but.
Okay.
There's land left over there, Kevin here. There's land left over there. I don't have, I can't recall how many acres is left.
I mean, originally, the selectman wanted to build that puppy in Howard Park, which would have been a total disaster. Anyway.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much for, I don't know if it makes sense going through the rest of the document, Adam, because I think we have some fundamental issues here that we have to come to grips with.
Do you?
Chaz?
I think that I'd like to be able to, to maybe have a couple of us rework this before we, we continue on with it.
Yeah, that would be my, Carol, Jolynn, you agree?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. So I really appreciate the thorough review, Adam.
Well, you're, you're welcome. And I'm sorry that, you know, it's, it's so significantly annotated. I mean, I had hoped it would be a simple review, but these bylaws, some of the more, these age restricted bylaws are some of the more complex bylaws that are adopted as part of a municipality zoning bylaw, because of the implications that the discriminatory effects that are intended that they can potentially have. So everything from the age of the resident, number of bedrooms, and all trigger, you know, careful reviews by the Attorney General's Office and then potential challenges in the future. I do allude a little later in this document to the fact that the, the AG's office has been a bit hands off with this. They've been reluctant to deem these bylaws discriminatory, but they've offered some careful cautions to towns that have adopted these, that they, they consult with council, and that they recognize that applying the bylaw in a strict manner may subject them to, to legal challenges. The only thing I'd add to this, and I'm happy to assist with this or to provide Beth with additional information, I don't know where the form of document that you crafted came from originally, but there are, you know, the, these, these, nobody really reinvents the wheel with respect to age restricted housing developments. There are a series of different bylaws that are out there. You can do a simple Google search and find different bylaws adopted in different municipalities. I know of a couple, one recently adopted, I think in the town of Littleton.
And this is the one that we started with.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they're on their, they're on their second version. The first one, I didn't, I don't think they did too well. I was going to call them and ask them what their comments were.
So, so interesting, interestingly, Littleton's looks a lot more like, and I had it backwards, this document you've got up on your screen, this is the, this was the Word document of what Beth provided me. And you see at the top of this very page here, units within an age restricted development shall be occupied by at least one individual over the age of 55 years old. So this is the bylaw, the version that I got from Beth that has a, an obligatory restriction. The other version, which was a PDF version she gave me, so I couldn't quite edit it, must have been something that you were contemplating either before or after the version you sent over.
Yeah. Adam, I didn't need to cut you off there. I just wanted to give you a little insight on that. This is Chris from MRPC. And you're absolutely correct. The Word version you have is probably the later one. And Littleton was the model we were working on. And I remember, I forget which meeting it was, but it must have been the last one that we did a draft for. Somebody mentioned that, oh, we started talking about potentially implementing an age restriction. And I actually found language from the Littleton, that was from the Littleton version, that said, you know, a deed restriction is not required. We obviously didn't know why that was in there. So we removed it, put in the language about an age restriction. After hearing your presentation, it's pretty clear why that was in there. So, yeah, that's, that's probably where that came from.
And that's, that's exactly correct. I mean, that's, that's, that's what differentiates. Littleton did, did a lot of what you're proposing. And all of that would be legal if the age restriction, restriction is not obligatory. And likely that's why Littleton, whether they did it on their own, or legal counsel, or they borrowed from another community, that's likely why they had that provision in their bylaw. In fact, you've eliminated it because you wanted to impose the restriction. But by doing that, you sort of open up a bit of a can of worms in terms of what other potential conflicts arise with state or federal law.
Next question, Ms. McNally.
Yes.
We have a public hearing at 7:30. I just wanted to, to make sure that, that's been acknowledged. The attendees here.
Yes, I was planning to move right to that. And so I would like to, you know.
Can we continue this public hearing? Is that possible?
Yeah, that's what I was planning to do, is I was planning to, you know, based on Chaz's comment, that we need to come back here and do some work on that, would be to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until, is it January the 11th?
Yeah, January 11. And, oh gosh, sorry, we have two hearings that night already. I just want to double check on the times.
Okay.
Okay. Give me a minute.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, Phil.
To Adam, are you saying that if we, if we use a deed restriction, we're more likely to get, you know, harassed about discrimination?
Right. So, so what I'm saying is that when you make the age restriction obligatory, mandatory, then your development therefore qualifies as a quote unquote, age restricted development. And therefore, you're subject to state and federal laws that apply to age restricted developments and that require certain, certain components, certain characteristics or, or attributes to avoid discriminatory impact. If you don't make that age restriction obligatory, you therefore aren't subject to those, those same requirements, because it's no longer qualified as an age restricted development.
Okay.
I'm still looking.
Okay, Beth, take your time.
Adam, to, to your comment in regards to this being heavily annotated, that's why we wanted you to look at it, because there is some direction that we needed. And this is the direction that's going to put us in, in, you know, where, where our next steps are. So I appreciate everything that you've done here. I, I believe that this gives us a more focused view on, on where we need to go.
Sure.
I think we really need to read those state and federal laws, right, to, to have any, any understanding of what we're doing.
I, I have some potentially helpful, and I'm happy to share them with Beth. And you don't need to read them, but if you have an interest, you can. I have some secondary sources, you know, sort of guidance documents prepared by CHOP, for example, that provide, you know, summary overviews without having to dig into the Housing for Older Persons Act of 1975, read 150 pages of legislative text.
Oh, my God.
Provide good summaries as to, as to what is meant to be accomplished and what you're.
That would be appreciated.
All right. So we have one public hearing. There's one public hearing at 6:45, and then another public hearing at 7:15. So I think it would be safe to say 8 o'clock on the 11th.
Okay. So can I have a, a motion to continue this public hearing till January the 11th at 8 o'clock PM?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Who was that the seconded? Was that Carol?
Jolynn.
Oh, Jolynn. Okay. Chaz, how do you vote?
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Carol?
Carol Hoffs, yes.
Jolynn?
Yes.
And Lance, yes. Okay, with that, and I'm, I'm sorry, Greg, for the delay, but I would like to reopen the public hearing for the renewal of the cell tower site on 12 Ball Road.
Thank you.
And so I assume that, I mean, this should go fairly quick. So Beth drafted a decision, and we've agreed upon language for the fire department to potentially put some communications equipment there, which was their request. So Greg, I think we've been around that, I think, twice now. And I think we have terms available that are good for the town and good for your client as well.
Yes, thank you. I know last time I wanted to just double check with the chief, and I, I did. And he, he signed off on everything. I made sure that he was good with what we were, with what we had discussed, because last time I discussed with you, I hadn't specifically cleared of the exact language with him. And I wanted to make sure a year or two down the line, he wasn't going to have a problem with it. And we're, we're all good now.
So everybody's good. So we just need a motion.
I'm just going to check to see if there's any discussion from any.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Carol?
Yes, yes.
Jolynn? And Lance, yes. Okay, so we're good, Greg.
Thank you very much. It's great to work with you all, and especially we're grateful to be best.
All right, thank you. Sorry, sorry we were late.
No, no, no problem. Thank you.
Okay. All right, all right. So I think we're.
That's all right.
All right. I assume I'm not sharing right now, correct?
No.
All right. So let me try to get something up. Hold on. Adam, are you still here?
He just signed out, I think.
Okay. All right. All right. Let me share my screen again.
Yes.
So if we look at our current bylaw on the Scenic Road Act, and it says where a portion of a stone wall must be removed for access to the property, the remaining stone wall will be left in a stable and orderly fashion. Removing stone walls located along scenic roads within the towns right of way is subject to filing and application within the planning board pursuant to, you know, the, the Mass Scenic Roads Act. And all roads in towns and other than numbered routes or state highways are designated as scenic roads. So when I looked at our bylaw, in my mind, it seemed to be really, really vague. It's basically saying that if I need to put a driveway in, you know, I need to file an application. And if I remove one, I have to file, you know, for it. But if I'm going to modify one, I can just go ahead and do that. So I thought our, our bylaw was, was fairly vague. And so what I did next is I went ahead and I looked at other towns, and I'm going to show them to you. And I don't know if anyone's had a chance to actually look at this. So I looked at Ashby, and Ashby appeared to have, in my mind, the most detailed article, basically where it, you know, went into fairly, I think, good details in terms of protecting scenic roads. You know, definitional sections, you know, you're not allowed to tear down painting or destroy. It brought in that the tree warden was responsible for the trees. So I thought it did a good job. Then I looked at, so that's their by, that's their bylaw, fairly long. Groton, Groton really, in my mind, when I looked at it, was fairly high level. In fact, I think that it doesn't really protect stone walls, because it says, any repair, maintenance, or reconstruction of a scenic road or paving done with respect shall not involve the cutting or removal of trees or tearing down of stone walls. So basically, if I'm the highway department, I can't touch the stone wall. But if I'm a landowner, I interpret this as being, I can do whatever I want to with my stone wall, because I'm not maintaining a road. I then looked at Lunenburg, and Lunenburg does not have a bylaw addressing scenic roads. Oh, this is the one in Townsend where I showed you before, where we had the, apart, we already went over that one. And then I wanted to show you the amendment that was made to it. So it basically defined the right of way, defined what stone walls were, defined what trees were, what trees cutting and removal was. And then I also went, put the state of mass here. And I believe that Pepperell does not have a scenic roads act either. So with all of that, I went ahead and constructed a, and let me just pull it up. I'm going to share again. So I constructed this proposed bylaw, which I based a lot on the Ashby law. And I thought I'd give everyone an opportunity to just look at it real quickly and ask me if you have any questions or comments on it. So I tried to make it a catch-all, and the towns right of way is 20 feet from the center line. Yes, Ronnie? You're muted. You're muted.
Um, I guess for me, the issue is the town's right-of-way. I think everything else is good. I think our stone wall bylaw, as it is, is fine. The only, this is much more detailed, but it only allows for stone walls within the town's right-of-way. And if I am to understand, the stone walls that parallel roads are outside of the town's right-of-way.
It depends. It's 20 feet from the center line.
On all roads? I thought that was variable. Are you certain?
If you look at the definition that we have a right-of-way.
So I guess the one on Adams Road that started all this was outside the town's right-of-way. And so I think we have to look at that. I also think that you need to consider whether or not that stone wall holds a drill hole. On our, on our property, the, one of the corners is a drill hole in the stone wall. If that stone wall were removed, we would lose the drill hole. And I think that that's true more than likely on several properties in town, especially those that were carved out from old farmland, which our house was. So I think that's...
So I assume that the drill, all right, so what would you propose from the distance from a road's center line?
I think it's more paralleling the town's right-of-way without distance being a consideration. Because the one on Adams Road, Adams Road is more narrow than Meadow Road. So I haven't taken a tape measure out there, but I will bet you any money that our stone wall is outside the town's right-of-way if the one on Adams Road was.
So you would say any stone wall that parallels a scenic road?
Correct.
If it's 200 feet back, so be it.
I think you can be, again, this would probably be an Adam question for wording. I mean, certainly, we have stone walls all through our property. So if you go back behind, yeah, there's a stone wall back there that would parallel Meadow Road, but it's, you know, 250, 400 feet back. So that one would not be subject. So the wording would have to be right. But I think that if you're looking at within the town's right-of-way, you really haven't done a whole lot different from what's already covered under our bylaw.
I don't see where our bywall, bylaw, and I will, I will, hold on one second, I'll put it up. Oops, I went by it. I don't see our bylaw, which is 14524, how that restricts me from tearing out my stone wall.
It does not. Removing stone walls located along scenic roads within the town's right-of-way is subject to filing an application. But if you are outside the town's right-of-way, you can. And so the issue is not, I mean, if we want to tear out the stone wall back behind our house, hey, go for it. But the one along the road, I would want subject to this bylaw. And if it is outside the town's right-of-way, it is not subject to this bylaw.
But I think we have to put some sort of a distance on it. I mean, that's my feeling. I understand your point, Ronnie. Your point is that it needs to be more than just the town's right-of-way, is your feeling?
Or bordering the town's right-of-way. Within the town's right-of-way, or maybe bordering the town's right-of-way. But that's really an Adam's question. At least for me, it would protect the stone walls along our roads.
Okay.
And I'm not opposed to repairing a stone wall. You know, it's the tearing out of historic stone walls. That's the issue. So I don't know, what does the actual state law say?
Hold on a second. I'll show it to you.
See, my concern, if I may, Lance?
Yes.
I understand what we're trying to do here, and if it's within the right-of-way, I understand that we have a say on it. But my thoughts and feelings are, if it's past that, who are we to tell somebody to, you know, what to do on their own land?
Well, that's true.
Well, I mean, we do tell, we do tell folks what they can do on their own land. Like, for example, I could not build a 10-story house on my property. I could not erect a tower, you know, without a permit. So, but I understand your point. Your point, it comes down to property rights.
Yeah.
All right, so Ronnie, can you see the state law?
I can.
Let me know when you want me to move it forward.
Okay, so it's in that second paragraph. "After a road has been designated as a scenic road, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work done with respect thereto shall not involve or include the cutting or removal of trees or the tearing down or destruction of stone walls and portions thereof, except with the written, prior written consent of the planning board." So it would be, it would be just, it would just apply to stone walls along a scenic road. And it's to preserve the character of the town. Nothing more than that. Stone walls that are back through the woods, tear away, you know? And if it's a drill hole for your property, well, then you're the one tearing it out. You're losing it.
Well, I think that if you have a drill hole, then you need to replace it with a suitable marker.
That would be reasonable, I suppose. But I guess it's just, I'm not trying to tell people what to do on their property. I just think that, do we or do we not want to protect the historic stone walls that are along our scenic roads? And if we do remove the stone walls, are our roads still scenic? Or not? My guess is they are not.
Well, I mean, if I look at the state law, it's a road is designated as scenic, regardless what's done to, you know? I mean, what I don't like about the state...
There are other things, but why have we, you know, like, why is Wallace Hill Road scenic? Why, why are the roads that we're, you know, we designate every road in town as scenic except for the numbered routes?
Correct.
And to me, the things that make it scenic, yeah, there's vistas here and there. But for the most part, a lot of it is the stone walls, the fact that this was all old farmland. If it's, I think that's an important part of the character of Townsend.
Okay.
And so it's not any stone wall that I'm talking about. Stone walls that are perpendicular to the road, hey, go for it. Take them down. But it's the ones that parallel the road that, to me, are help to preserve the character of town. So if, and yes, it's a property right thing, but I'm not thinking of things that are, you know, behind your house or anything like that. But if they're right along the road, that helps to make the road scenic. That's my thoughts.
All right, anyone else with any thoughts on what I wrote?
Thank you, Lance, for doing that for us. I appreciate it.
Okay. So can all of us sort of take an action on how we want to sort of set the boundary, what your position might be, and then we can adjust this accordingly? I'm trying to figure out how to move forward. Any recommendations, Chaz?
So we're looking at outside of the town's right-of-way?
Yes.
Thinking that we might need to put a number on it?
Yeah. I mean, I'll take the action item as Veronica suggested and talk to Adam to see, you know, you know, you know, something parallel in the road or something, to see if he has any thoughts.
Yeah, some kind of visual cue or some kind of, yeah, I agree with that.
All right, Carol?
Yeah, I agree with that, because I'm just concerned about, I guess I'd like to know exactly how many feet or number of where the right-of-way is or how far back the stone wall is that I cannot touch.
Yeah.
I just get concerned about telling people what they can and can't do.
Yep.
Mine too.
How long, but I don't like driving around. I went to my daughter's house mostly, which is the road that's got five different names, Wallace Hill or Townsend Hill, whatever name it is. Most of the stone walls you can't even see because it's covered in weeds.
I think it starts out as Proctor.
Yes, yeah, it does start as Proctor, but...
And ends up as Townsend Hill.
But I know my drive's down to my daughter, so you can hardly even see the stone walls, you know, with the weeds covering them.
All right, Geraldine, any, anything to add?
No, I'm kind of with Carol on that about telling people what to do, what they can or cannot do with their property. So I think we ought to look a little bit further into it.
Okay. All right, all right, with that, I think we are at, 4.5, Beth? MRPC Unified Planning Work Program grant? No, we discussed that already. We're at 4.6, Monmouth United Transportation Commission Grant Opportunities. And did I stop sharing?
Yes, you did.
All right, and I'm going to also make Cartley the host again. I don't like being in charge. Okay. Okay, Beth. You're muted.
So I apologize. I was checking on something. Is there a question?
4.6, MJTC Commission Grant Opportunities Update.
Okay, so in your file, in your, the OneDrive file, I put together a, let me find it, under Work Session, I put together a grant, an MJTC grant document, which is titled MJTC Grant Announcements and Opportunities. And these are the main announcements that were made at the last meeting. Is Veronica still on the call? Nope, okay, all right.
What, Ronnie left us?
Yeah, I think she did. It's down to the hearty few.
I hope I didn't upset her.
No. So I'll quickly go through them, but you can look at it at your convenience. They discussed the, well, they announced the DOT Shared Spaces and Streets Winter Grant Program. They also announced the TIP Program, which is the, basically, the Transportation Improvement Program. And I did reach out to MRPC on how to actually get a program developed and the application process for having a project in the TIP Program. And there's also Mass Trails Grant, which is, the deadline is coming up quite quickly for, that one's being February 1st, 2021. I also included on this particular document the Safe Roots to School Grant, so we would have all that in one place, thinking this is all, these are all grants that have come to our attention through MJTC. So with that, we've had a request from Select Woman Cal to potentially, you know, have a meeting, multi-board meeting, talk to discuss some of these grants. And I just didn't know what the board thought about that, or that would be a possibility. It would have to be pretty soon. She's suggesting a date of January 7th.
What day of the week is that?
A Thursday.
I'm fine with the 7th, but we will have to just make sure we meet the postings, Beth.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Yeah, with the holiday, I'll have to make sure we get that.
Yeah, you saw Kathy's email, right?
Yeah, perfect, all right.
Okay.
Some of the, some of the ideas that Select Woman Cal mentioned were inviting, you know, other boards, Parks and Recreation, you know, Conservation, a lot of the other boards that might be involved. And then, as you had mentioned, Chaz, earlier, Ray Jackson for the Trails Grant. You know, a number of people that just could be invited.
I think the Historic Commission should be invited, too.
Yeah, okay. And I'd like to get this posted soon, so if they want to, you know, post for joint meetings, that can be done. So the Historic Commission. So that's kind of what was going on with MJTC at the last meeting, a lot of talk, you know, about these opportunities and grants. And then, you know, the update, you know, there would be the Walkability Study that has been started, so that was also discussed. Yeah. That would be the grant opportunities, and you can look at that at your leisure. I was, just to mention, I was contacted by NRWA, the representative for the Nashville Wild and Scenic Rivers. There is a grant available, and that is a due date, I believe, of March. And I think some of the projects involved there might be more in the ballpark of conservation. It's going to be protecting the riverfront, you know, along the Nashua. I believe it's Veronica, too. But, so I don't know if you would like to include that in the Grants Meeting, if that's a possibility on the 7th, or if you want, I can forward that to the Conservation Commission, or we can include it while in the meeting. I don't know what everyone feels about that. I'd be happy to include it.
What are they looking for?
They are looking for different projects. Let me grab the email from, that I received, so I can give you an idea of what some of those projects are. It's $5,000 grants.
It's $5,000 grants. And they are awarded every year. Okay, so projects must support the goals described in the stewardship plan, which fall into three categories: biological diversity, recreation and scenic, and historical and cultural resources. Okay, so that would actually fit well in the grant.
It would.
Okay, good.
And you know what? It might be, I don't know, I'm looking at Chaz, does it make sense to get someone from education, you know, from the school, involved in this, too, on the 7th?
Yeah, for, if you want. I mean-
I'm just thinking, you know, in terms of high schoolers' projects, stuff like that, and grants?
I agree. Somebody that would, yeah, I agree.
Okay. That would be excellent.
I don't know who that would be, but it would be someone through North Middlesex or something.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so probably the curriculum develop, you know, somebody who's into the curriculum development.
Yeah.
Could even be scouting, too, because that would be a badge.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And just another note, in terms of the grant meeting, Selectwoman Kell has offered to pretty much do a PowerPoint and explain, you know, each one of these grants and lead into to the special.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
All right. All right. 5.1, Notices from Towns and Other Towns. Chaz?
This, I guess the first one I have is one that's already gone by in December 17th. It was a public hearing notice for the town of Groton for a definitive subdivision plan and special permit. That was on Longley Road and Sand Hill Road. We also have a memorandum from the executive assistant to the town administrator. This is for, "Per Chapter 14-1 of the town bylaws, please appoint a representative to the capital planning committee for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2021." And that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, is it possible to make that appointment tonight, or that recommendation tonight?
So 5.2, so an appointment to the, to the cap planning committee, is there anyone that would like to step forward for that?
I volunteer for that.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
So a motion to appoint Chaz, our planning board representative to the capital planning committee?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Geraldine. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Geraldine, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Lance, yes? And I assume Chaz, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With that, I think we've gone through everything. It's been a long meeting. So a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All right. Chaz? You in favor?
Sex and Dranian, yes.
Lance, yes. Carol?
Yes.
Geraldine, yes.
Yes.
All right. With that, enjoy, everyone enjoy your holidays, if I don't speak to you between now and then.
Okay. Merry Christmas to everyone.
All righty.
Merry Christmas.
Bye now.
Thank you.